We have seven o'clock, like to call the January second, twenty twenty four, I did get it right. A meeting of the Person Board of County Commissioners, sure at this time, recognize that we do have a quorum. And also, if you see a new face at the table, uh, we have a substitute for our newly appointed attorney who's on vacation. But, um, Lydia from Bell.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate you coming in. She is from the Bro, same law firm, Bro, and she's here to assist us with any legal matters we might, be challenged with tonight, and we thank her for coming up. First on the agenda, we will have Commissioner, um, Jason Thomas leading us in an invocation and our pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Palmer.
Let us pray. Our most kind and dear heavenly Father, we come to you tonight grateful for the opportunity to come together, to come together in a free country that we may assemble and, God, we ask you just to be with this group, be with our county, continue to help us grow, continue to help us grow in the right way. The Lord, we ask you just to be with this group and, and help us to, uh, lead us in, in making the right decisions to, for the betterment of the Person County. The Lord, we want to ask you to be with our law enforcement, our fire department, all our first responders, God, we ask you just to be with them. We ask you to be with the Greensboro PD, God, watch over them, take care of them as only you can. Well, we ask you just to go with us, lead us, guide us, and save us, in your heavenly name I do pray. Amen.
All those who will rise, just glad with, with. Congratulations to the fire of the United States of America and to the real public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, Next is discussion, adjustment, and approval of the agenda as presented. Have a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Motion on the table to approve the agenda in a discussion. Dear None, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. First, on our agenda is a public hearing, public hearing, uh, for, on whether the Board of Commissioners should adopt a resolution to change the organization and governance of some of the county's human services functions. And, uh, Andrew Cathy.
Sure. So we are going to have a public hearing today. This was noticed in the Courier Times with more than thirty days' advance notice prior to tonight's meeting. The Board has discussed this on a couple of different occasions, um, in twenty twenty-three. So what is currently being considered is making changes to human services functions within Person County Government. The human services functions are social services, health, veteran services, and Pats. Um, at the last meeting, the Board indicated an interest in forming a consolidated human services agency with social services and Pats. Um, the Board has also continued, uh, to give consideration to veteran services as an option, uh, for the Consolidated Human Services Department. That was previously proposed by staff, and I have had some individual conversations with Board members, um, recently that indicate that that is still something to be considered. Um, so at this time, the human services functions that the Board has considered for consolidation are social services, veteran services, and potentially Pats. Um, the Board has indicated that you would not like to consider the Health Department as part of a consolidated agency. There are various options. Um, the Board has indicated an interest in assuming the duties and responsibilities of the governing board, either assuming the duties of the DSS Board solely over social services, or creating a consolidated human services agency and becoming the governing board for that agency. So there are some slight differences with either one of those options. Um, as presented, if the Board of Commissioners assumes governance of the Social Services Department, the employees remain, um, under the State Human Resources Act, and the Social Services Director would report directly to the Board of Commissioners serving as the Board of Social Services. If the Board does move forward with doing a consolidated human services agency, then the Board may decide to bring the employees out from under the State Human Resources Act, and then all employees of the consolidated agency would be subject to county, um, human resources policies. And the, uh, Director of the Consolidated Agency would report to the County Manager. You can decide after the public hearing not to make any changes, or you can evaluate other options. These are not, um, limited at this time. There really are a variety of ways that you could approach restructuring, um, the human services functions, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have when we get to that point in the discussion. Um, but following the public hearing, you will, uh, be having a discussion about the desire of the Board, um, after receiving the public comment. And the next step in the process would be for the Board to approve a resolution at a later meeting that would, um, outline any changes that you would like to make. If you desire to do so, establish an effective date for those changes, and outline the details, um, of what that would look like moving forward. So there will be time in between this meeting and the next meeting to prepare that resolution for adoption based on the direction of the Board tonight if you do decide to make any changes. So we do have this time, um, set aside now to hear from the public who may be in favor of or against, um, making any changes to the organization and governance of our human services functions.
Okay, so. At this time, we need a motion to open a public hearing.
So move.
A motion to open the public hearings on the floor. Any discussion or comments? Dear None, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. So the, um, public hearing is in session, and, uh, Madam Clerk, uh, you have a list there of speakers?
Yes, sir. So we have eighteen people in favor of, and we have ten in opposition of.
So you're going with in favor of first?
That is correct.
Okay, and they proceed with the names.
All right, and can you please let me know a timeline at per speaker?
Two minutes, I'm sorry, yeah, with, uh, with that, and the others, ten minutes is gonna be it. And I would like to remind you to please be cognizant of those two minutes, and the others that would, uh, honor, you should honor and provide the same courtesy for them to speak. And, uh, so when the time expires, you will hear a buzzer, and so please again, uh, be mindful of that and, uh, and make room for the next person to come up and speak.
All right, can I have IT go ahead and set the clock for the first speaker for two minutes? So in favor of, we have Sabrina Barrier of Roxboro.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The packets that I just handed out have a lot of research in them from our group, so we wanted to pass them around to you so you can kind of have that while we're speaking. Um, like you said, my name is Sabrina Barrier, and we've spoken several times through the last few months. Um, I'm here representing Person's Promise for Children Coalition, but I'm also here as a foster parent and a member of our community. The other thing I'd like to state is that we have several people who could not be here tonight because they were afraid of retaliation and afraid that something would happen if they did speak out. So instead of reading to you about facts or anything that we have, I want to lead you in an exercise tonight. So if you would, all close your eyes, even everyone in the audience. Imagine your child or a child that you love on their first Christmas morning where they are so excited for Santa. See their smiles and them jumping up and down, hugs and laughter. Think about the first time they called you mom, dad, or aunt, or uncle. Now their first steps, the first foods they tried, their first day of school or daycare. Now remember your nighttime routine, the baths, the giggles, brushing their hair and teeth, getting them cozy and ready for bed. Now imagine you have less than a week's notice that this child is going to go home. You take them to a cold office building where you are not even allowed inside. A social worker comes outside, takes all of the things you so diligently packed, and then rips their tiny screaming bodies from your arms. They just walk away. The last thing I want you to do is imagine going home, getting in bed, and thinking of all the things about your child. Are they safe? Are they warm? Are they scared? Did somebody read them a bedtime story? Now open your eyes. This is not a made-up scenario. This is my life, it's the DeYoung's family's life, and several other people's lives that we're dealing with here in the county. So I just wanted to let you know that consolidating this board and taking control is the first step on a road to regaining the trust of the foster parents and our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person we have is Patricia Lunsford of Roxboro.
My name is Patricia Lunsford. Um. Me personally and my grandson are victims of DSS. And I say that because in twenty twenty, my grandson was basically taken after being abused by the authority that DSS has and manipulated and lied and arranged and planned and took my grandson. They continue to abuse their authority, not only to take him, but to keep him. And as of now, he still hasn't came home. I've been threatened by DSS workers on several occasions. And I'm just trying to understand. A phone call to understand, but yet you get threatened to have harassment charges because you called. I just, I think DSS needs a deep cleaning. It really does. Because no child should be taken when they're not in harm's way. And if somebody could, could explain it to me, I'm willing to listen. But DSS, I don't, I don't understand, and I guess I could never understand because I cannot understand a lie, and that's what they've told. And along with the DSS lawyer that helped them through the court proceedings, I was kept out of court for over a year and a half because I knew the truth, and they didn't want me to tell it. So they kept me and my lawyer outside. We were not even allowed to go into the courtroom. I just want help to understand and to get my grandson back. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Patricia Long.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I am here for Penny and Vincent DeYon of where, good evening Commissioners, Penny and Vincent DeYon are aware of the results of the state investigation. Their results are very concerning and raise questions. Everyone involved in the case was not contacted and interviewed. Not all reports were submitted to the courts were reviewed by Penny DeVon. Penny DeVon had been contacted with the state concerning the results of the investigation. The letter stated there are always areas to improve. I would like to remain, remind you all, Person County is, I would like to remind you all, Penny DeVon and her nephews are not only the families, they're all victims here. And I really want y'all to do something. I sit there and watch the day they took the look at you. It's heartbreaking. Like the other one said, close your eyes, and you're wanting to think, rational and funny, please pay attention, County Commissioners. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Roxy Wade.
Good afternoon. I'm here on behalf of Penny, but also myself. Um, I have my two-year-old grandbaby. Um, she was with me for a temporary custody. She went back with her mom and dad, whooped the whoop, but long story short, if the, through the process was hectic because of the fact, they didn't give you understanding how the process worked with this the first time I went through it, and then through the, at the end, I'm still stuck with my grandbaby after they returned back to the mom, and only because I can't trust them of making another report, because the last time I made a report, she said if they heard another report, my grandbaby would go straight into foster care and skip by me. So at the end of the day, the situation is still going on, but I'm also keeping my grandbaby safe without them. February, I'm fighting myself for custody without our county help, which we as taxpayers are paying these people to. are paying these people to help us. And something has to be done. I mean, and then at the end, they turned on me versus at the beginning, they was on my side, but then when they got ready to return the baby back, I was the bad person. And I haven't did anything wrong, but been honest and did what I supposed to do. But I just want what's done what's best for these children to the very end. I mean, do some homework, do more research, get off your butt, get behind, wait for behind the desk, then do what's right for these children. Because it's not fair to kids dying and getting hurt and neglected. You know, it's just sad.
Thank you.
Next speaker we have is Taylor Davis of Roxboro.
Good evening Commissioners. I just wanted to, I'm here on behalf of Penny as well. I have been victimized by the Person County DSS. False accusations were reported. They have to be investigated, I understand. But once that caseworker comes and sees that my child is in no, no harm's way, I should and she should have been left alone. It hurts the children. She is, she has been, she has been raised right since she was born. And every, I mean, I didn't even know who my caseworker was half of the time. There is no communication unless in that moment, they want it. They want to hear from me. There was different people knocking on my door and all these people just asking these personal questions to my daughter that it didn't, it didn't need to be done. The investigation should have ended at the initial, when they made that accusation, should have been over with. After they came and seen that my child was under no harm's way. And then continued to pester her. Something needs to be done. Something needs to be investigated. I don't know. Good evening.
Thank you.
Next speaker we have is Ron Jeffries of Roxboro.
Good evening Commissioners. I'm Ron Jeffries. I'm the president of the Person Veterans Council. And I'm here on behalf of the Veterans Council. We put this to a vote that we're in support of combining DSS and the VSO office. The Veterans of Person County, we have almost right at three thousand veterans here in Person County. We have a population of around thirty-nine thousand, so we're almost ten percent of the population. This is the time to get our VSO full-time and we would greatly appreciate that because she's only here nineteen hours a week. She has such a backlog, it's unreal. If you do consider to do this merger, we're requesting that you bring her on full-time, adjust her budget because honestly, right now, the VSO's budget is twenty-six thousand dollars and some change. That comes out to about ten dollars and thirty-three cents to be spent on every veteran in Person County. You can't even go to a fast food restaurant now. We also would like for her to get a more secure location for her office where her veterans can feel more secure instead of just sitting out in the middle of an open area because some veterans have an issue with just being out in public, but if they have a more secure area, they can be there. She's only here nineteen hours a week. That's, that's not enough. And over the holidays, I was talking to the VSO, she had almost fifty voicemails she had to answer and people were wondering why it's taking her so long. If y'all combine us, we are requesting you make the VSO full-time, adjust her salary, find her a better office space and more support. And just to put a bug in your ear, as you get ready to start talking budgets for next year, she really needs an administrative assistant. I don't know what the term is the county calls them, but she needs an administrative assistant for at least thirty hours. She is busting her tail for the Veterans of Person County, Warren County, and Vance County who have less veterans than Person County, both have full-time VSOs. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker, David Bell of Roxboro.
Good evening Council.
David.
I, as I said, I'm David Bell. I'm a member of Post 138. I'm also the district commander for this area for the American Legion. I'd like to echo a lot of what Ronnie said, but I want to add some other things. Warren County, Vance County are part of my district. And they have not quite as many veterans combined as we do, and yet they got full-time. I really think as veteran-friendly as this county has shown consistently, we are a bright shining star in the American Legion for the way the community supports us. Let's do it one step further. Let's combine and put Ms. Vicki where she belongs, a full-time job. She works very long hours when she's allowed to be here. Think of how much more she could get done when she had full time. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Tracy Elixen of Roxboro.
Good evening, I'm Tracy Elixen. I'm also a veteran in Person County and also echo what Ronnie said. I had a health issue earlier this year that is deemed military-related and the services, and I didn't, I didn't know how to get out of the services I needed to get. I'm just not unaware. I don't, I don't know about everything. And so having her be able to do this full-time and having an assistant would greatly benefit all the veterans because there are people like me that are, that are lost, just unaware that these things exist. So I think we need to invest more in not just her and the support she needs, but getting the word out there to our veterans because I run into veterans every day that doesn't even know that our little group exists. So we need to do a better job about that. And I think, believe, I do believe we need, the Commissioners need to have oversight over DSS. I personally speak on, I've been adept with them over years personally. And I'll just go back to one, the last example I had with them. When I was awarded full custody with my daughter and because I filed on, on February the third, my daughter had been with me months before that, but because I filed on the third, they still tried to get me to pay child support to the other parent. And everyone acknowledged that the child had been with me. So they're not doing it on the behalf of the child. That is not for the, because the child had been with me. That's not on the behalf of the child. But they asked for money to go, not to the child. So I understand, I, I originally came here to support the veterans, but I know exactly how these people in the back feel. One hundred percent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Philip Schisler of Hurdle Mills.
Good afternoon, I'm Phil Schisler. I'm here for the DAV Chapter Seventy-two. Ronald couldn't be here tonight. But basically, we're backing everything that Ronnie had just came up and said. DAV is all about getting us benefits and, and services for medical that it's quite challenging to figure out how to go through. Having a VSO that could help us, Ms. Vicki, wonderful, and she's just, she's very backed up. So we're very much in support of having a full-time position for Ms. Vicki to help DAV Chapter Seventy-two get through all the challenges of getting the medical and VA benefits that we all need. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Joseph Raines of Roxboro.
Evening.
Evening.
Just like David, Ronnie, and Phil said, there's a lot of scars that veterans carry, not only on the inside but on the out. What Vicki does for us, she's a superstar, putting these two areas together. You not only have veterans now, but you're gonna have veterans coming out of high school in four to six years. Then you're, they're gonna need help. The VA system is a circus. People think it's, oh, it's so easy to just go there and get help. No, it's brutal. Without Vicki's help, I've had to fight with senators, congressmen, but she's helped me through it. I was in the Army at the age of seventeen, got out at twenty-seven. I've been shot, I've been stabbed, I've seen things that'll make you want to cry at night. But Vicki's there for us. So putting these two forces together just benefits us veterans even more. So think about that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next speaker we have is Raymond Myers.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just want to echo the comments that are made in reference to putting these two systems together. The Veterans of Person County, we continue to serve our, our county and our country every day. And we are just looking for some help to be able to help us when we have to go and do things that are, that are hard for us to understand in some cases. Like someone just mentioned, the VA is not an easy thing for us to be able to navigate through. And Vicki gives us all of the information we need to be able to make things easier on us in a time where we, in our most vulnerable time. So veterans in Person County need this to happen so it's, so it'll be easier for us to be able to get the care that we need and rightfully that we deserve and that we earned by serving our country. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Alan Whitlow of Roxboro.
Good evening Commissioners. I've echoed the sentiments that everyone else has expressed, and I'd like to say especially the secure area for our VSO would be a big benefit. The senior center is, is great. The people that volunteer there are great. A lot of veterans aren't gonna go there because there's not somewhere where they're segregated from the general population. A lot of young veterans aren't gonna go there because it's a senior center. And there's, again, the stigma that'll go along with that. I don't fall in that category, but I'll also, like everyone else, praise Ms. Harris. She's been great to the veterans. She's helped me, she's helped pretty much everyone here speaking. She's backed up, like they said. It would benefit the veterans of this county if she was full-time and had an administrative assistant to help her navigate some of the paperwork so she could dedicate more time to helping the veterans. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker we have is Richard Noel of Roxboro.
Good afternoon. I am Richard Noel. I am commander of the American Legion Post 138 here in Roxboro. And just to echo what all my fellow veterans have said, Ms. Vicki really needs the support from the Commissioners to get her the full-time job she needs and the support she needs. I am a Vietnam-era veteran. And a lot of our Vietnam-era veterans faced horrible situations and were sent home to fend for themselves, to figure out what to do next. Where do I go for my benefits? Where do I go to support my family? And that's what the VSO does. They go through the, they go through the loops and know all the ins and outs with our federal government to get support our veterans need. Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Next speaker we have is Teresa Birch.
My name is Teresa Birch. I'm the treasurer of the Person Veterans Council and the daughter of a Vietnam veteran. I'm here this evening in support of a full-time veteran service officer for Person County. In my research, the counties of Allegheny, Anson, Ash, Dare, Davie, Halifax, Hurtford, Jackson, Martin, Vance, and Warren have a lot in common with Person County. We all, they all have similar populations, though in their veterans' populations are about similar, but the difference between those counties and Person County is we do not have a full-time VSO and they do. Many times, the needs of our local veterans are not met in a timely manner because Vicki, our VSO, is currently part-time and she simply cannot provide the services our veterans need and deserve in the two and a half days she's scheduled to be in the office. Our organization has heard from many frustrated veterans that have a hard time getting to see our VSO in the time that she's here because she's busy servicing their fellow veterans and they have to wait for her to become available. Sometimes there are issues veterans have that are time-sensitive and delays could be detrimental to that veterans needing services. I must add, though, that as much as we hear about the frustrations our veterans have with the part-time hours, we are also, we also hear how grateful these veterans are for Vicki, our VSO. We are told that she goes above and beyond to provide the help that her clients need. Just imagine how much more she could do if she were here in the office five days a week. The Person Veterans Council is in full support of combining the VSO with DSS if this merger will allow our VSO to move to full-time status to better serve our veteran community. My dad is a hundred percent disabled Vietnam veteran. The services of a VSO were imperative for him getting the services he deserved and was entitled to receive. Had the VSO in the previous town he resided held a part-time position, then he had fallen in the same long line as some of our Person County veterans have found themselves in and his benefits and other services he greatly needed would have been delayed. Person County has always shown our veterans utmost respect and support. Please continue to show your support and let them know that they and their needs matter by making our Veteran Service Office a full-time position. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker we have is Vicki Harris of Roxboro.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Vicki Harris, the Veteran Service Officer. And what I want to let you guys know today is that these veterans are my heart. And not only are they veterans, but they're also parents, they're grandparents. And if you consolidate DSS with the Veteran Service Office, those veterans that have children or are adopting children or whatever the case might be, it would be a little bit easier for us to connect with you, to find out what are the needs? What else do they need besides a benefit of funds to get by? There may be other things that those veterans need that we need to connect with and say, hey, look, this is how we can better serve this community. Every dime, every dollar that comes into Veterans, to Person County by a veteran, comes back to the community. They spend their money here. They buy houses, they buy cars, you know? And that is one thing that you cannot take away from what they have given so heartfeltly to protect the freedoms of this country. This is something that should be a no-brainer. You know, we need to be able to get together so that it services all. Thank you so very much for the time.
Thank you.
Next speaker we have is Liz Bratcher of Samora.
Thank you very much for having me today. Thank you for your service. My son-in-law's in Arakwa. This issue is about DSS but also about the children who are the victims of adult behavior and are the most innocent. There are several things I want to bring forth today and most of it will be in your books. I will not bring forth any names. But let me just say that this is our research and I know that there's going to be a group that will say, well, this isn't true. This is true to me because it's my research, our research. Friends of friends are hired at DSS, cousins are hired, leadership is not provided, and we know in one department, Adult Medicaid, that has had almost a complete turnover, turnover since 2018. Employees are fearful of their work environment and there is retaliation. In fact, I got fifteen messages on my way here from people who are not gonna be here tonight because they're afraid of retaliation. A DSS program administrator was hired with the suspect of fraud. Her behavior is unprofessional and without consequence. This has resulted in the resignation of others and a very unstable working environment. She is known as one of DSS's untouchables, and that's what they call them. One former commissioner, PJ Gentry, was on the DSS board, Mr. Paylor, another employee, and Mr. Jeffers told employees not to speak to Ms. Gentry if she would visit. They told employees that anything said to Ms. Gentry would need to be approved by them. That is employee intimidation. Mr. Tom Fitzgerald is the DCS attorney and has been a long friend of my husband. We know that Mr. Fitzgerald is a DSS attorney and he is the client of DSS, DSS is his client. However, the foster and kinship families do not understand this relationship or are not told of this relationship, and there's a lack of communication. Communication is sorely needed. There's much to tell, and it's all in your books, but I do wanna go on with, oh, I'm sorry, with one last thing if I may. There was recent case findings in a letter that I think you all know about, that stated Person County, stated the law, rule and policy and the administration of a certain case was followed. However, this letter only omits any description of these policies and the definition of administration that took place. The letter continues by stating that there are areas of needed improvement. You have to ask the question, what are those areas needed of improvement? Why did they not go on and ask those questions? Questions result to answers, and answers result to resolve, and that's what we need to do today. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Karina Clay.
Evening. I came tonight in support of the DeYoung family as well. I am not a Person County native, but I have made Person County my home. You guys are my family now. And I feel very connected, very close to this community. When I saw the story of what the DeYoung family was suffering through, it absolutely broke my heart. And now I'm finding out that we can also help our veterans community in the same fell swoop. To me, I'm...
To take your word?
It's a no-brainer. How do we not look out for the children while we're looking out for our veterans communities? These are two of the communities in Person County that need our help the most, and I feel like they are forgotten, especially the children, the at-risk children. And I just feel like this is a very important issue, and I beg you to please, please do this because, obviously, something's broken. If it wasn't broken, we wouldn't be here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is PJ Gentry of Hurley Mills.
Commissioners, good evening. Welcome to Person County. There's a lot going on, there's gonna be some opposition speaking tonight. I can say very clearly that there's a problem with DSS, we've known it for years, for years. And this is your opportunity to peel the layers of onions back and have some control. This is our county, these are our people, these are our children. And my experience, as Ms. Bratcher said, was I was stonewalled trying to get information. I have a file this thick of letters and requests from employees at DSS that I helped them. And they were afraid, they were afraid of their jobs. But there's one of their department heads here tonight, she had no problem requesting a meeting, a private meeting with me in a public space to complain about DSS. She was fishing to see what I might have discovered. It's corrupt. And there's people that wanna keep things hidden from you, from the public, and from the people they serve. And so I think you need to look at the reports, and I also think what you need to do is look at the money trail, follow where the money goes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes our in favor of.
Okay, move on then to speaking in opposition.
Okay, so the first speaker in opposition of is Carlton Paylor of Roxborough.
Evening.
Hey. How are y'all tonight? So, just wanna speak for a few moments, call the title of DSS director here in Person County. Been blessed to be, worked for DSS for nineteen years. Of those nineteen years, I've been also blessed to be the director. And I worked in here in Person County, born and raised, for different departments for twenty-seven years. In regards to consolidation, there have been numerous statements and slander without any facts or proof, so let's discuss the facts and proofs of the matter. But the child welfare case has unfortunately been discussed in the public. It's been verified by Peter West, the section chief for the county operations divisions of social services, as he stated in the letter, that policies were followed and that the children were safe. Two commissioners have stated that they have openly stated that they would let the state report of that case review determine if they would vote for consolidation or not. The state has also asked Person County to pilot a couple of programs for safety assessments because they know what we do is accurate before they put this on the entire estate. So, they chose us. You can ask Peter West. Favoritism has been stated, we have two human resources for the hiring process, no kind of off-state human resources and Person County human resources. Applicants must meet certain qualifications and are reviewed by both HR departments. Pay raises have truly been earned. Unfortunately, our turnover rate, surrounding counties have also had a pay stat of last year, and they received pay raises as well, and we've lost multiple employees to other counties like Wake, Vance and Grandwell. According to Children's Services Practice Notes, volume four, number three, rates of turnover for all DSS staff have ranged between twenty-four to thirty-two percent, or for average around twenty-nine percent. Or for Person County, according to our own HR, for fiscal year twenty-three, our turnover rate was approximately twenty percent. Commissioners and the board, DSS board have not met yet to discuss any concerns to have a major change for the largest department in the county without any conversations, not the best practice nor beneficial to county employees nor citizens. DSS makes up twenty-five percent of the entire full-time employees of Person County government. I do wanna state just two more matters real quickly. For twenty-six percent of the year, twenty-six percent of twenty-twenty-three, there was a child or children sleeping in DSS building with staff, yet staff was able to meet the demands of the jobs as well. Now, I support the veterans getting, they need a full-time staff member, but I don't support it doing through DSS. And if you have any questions, I would love to talk to any and each of you together or separately, discuss any of the issues. And I will say, follow the money, that'd be great, because we've been passing those audits with our fiscal audits. So, yeah, please follow the money, please follow the other audits, because you can ask our finance director and others of us passing the San Antonio County Audit and all the other audits. Yes, please follow that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker we have is Kristy Perry.
Good evening, Commissioners, my name is Kristy Perry. In my twenty-five-year career at Person County DSS, I have observed the work environment to be one that has promoted growth from within as well as sought talent from the outside when needed. I am an example of someone who has been able to grow within the agency. I have worked in service intake, child welfare, child support and in management. I have been promoted, but I have also been the employee who has applied for promotions and another candidate was chosen. So, my path to becoming the deputy director was not necessarily a smooth one. There have been allegations of cronyism at DSS. Consolidating DSS would only cultivate an environment for those allegations to flourish. Currently, DSS employees are subject to State Human Resources Act. That means that a state agency, someone outside of Person County government, is reviewing our employee practices. The Office of State Human Resources determines the minimum qualifications for agency jobs. They review an applicant's education and job experience to qualify them for a position. Individuals are chosen not for who they know or who they are in this community, but rather what they bring to the table as employees. In addition, when we do disciplinary actions, DSS employees are, they are reviewed by both the state and local HR departments to ensure that these actions are just. This gives the county an extra layer of protection as well as the employee because they have the option of filing an appeal with the Office of Administrative Hearings, another unbiased agency. A public attack on DSS started this process, and within months, here we are looking to make drastic changes to DSS employee rights and protections. At least two of you have said that the outcome of the state investigation will influence your vote. I hope you guys are men of your word. In the future, I would like to see both boards working together to improve employee and client experiences here in Person County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Tyler Terry.
Good evening, my name is Tyler Terry, and I'm currently the Child Welfare Program Manager in Person County. I started in Person County in January of twenty-one as the CPS supervisor. I was promoted to the Program Manager in April of twenty-three. What we do at DSS is not easy, we're touching people's lives when they are most in need. It is usually a critical time in their life, and unfortunately, sometimes the results are not what they wanted. Sometimes people are disgruntled and upset with us, not because we didn't do our job, but because we did do our job. What I have seen is that not everyone is suited for a job at DSS. Policy is always changing, and we have to keep up with that. I ask, what exactly does the county want to get from consolidation? From everything I've read, the commissioners will have the same powers that the current DSS board holds. So, what is it? Is the county and the commissioner seeking to hold the power to hire and fire the director? If that's the reason why, good management does not jump and make hasty decisions. We go through two different HRs, OSHR at the state level and then the county HR. There is no room for politics at DSS. I traveled forty-five minutes through two counties to come to work in Person County. I have eighteen years of experience working at DSS and could easily go work in another county for more money, but I don't. I don't because I love working in Person County. I love the people we serve and the people that I work with. We work extremely hard at DSS to help people in Person County. So, what will you base your decision on today? Will it be the hearsay that you've heard with no evidence to back it up? Several commissioners have stated that they will base their decision on the information from the state regarding a complaint against DSS. I am here to proudly read part of that letter from the state, as I believe each of you have received a copy of it in full. On September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three, North Carolina DHHS became aware of a complaint that a local citizen had shared with the Person County Board of County Commissioners. Section Chief Peter West reached out to you to discuss the case. It was agreed that Person County would gather the full record and would be reviewed by the regional child welfare specialist. This review was conducted on October twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three. The review showed that Person County followed law, rule and administration, policy and administration of this case.
Thank you.
Next speaker we have is Melinda Hudson.
Hi. My name is Melinda Hudson. Currently, I'm the Services Program Manager, promoted from Adult Services Supervisor and formerly a WorkFirst Employment Social Worker. I've been employed by Person County since nineteen ninety-five, however, ones like us don't get mentioned. I am of the silent group of people that you don't talk about or talk to. The only ones we hear about are the ones who leave. I chose to stay. This past August marked twenty-eight years of doing work that matters in people's lives. The majority of those years doing work affects safety and well-being of elderly or disabled adults. Why would I wanna put myself out there to be responsible for making those decisions? Decisions about people's capacity to stay in their homes or not, decisions if they need legal action taken to force them into a facility because they lack that capacity to decide for themselves. Decisions that make other citizens upset when we follow policy that mandates we walk away and leave people in a bad situation because they do have the capacity to decide for themselves. I continue to do so because we have policy, general statutes and best practice models to follow. We have state consultants providing oversight and continuous quality improvement. We have monitoring in all program areas to make sure we follow policy and provide feedback so we can best serve our community. We do this because we have that safety net of local management guidance and oversight as well as state guidance and oversight to help support our decisions. We are not alone in the tough decisions. We use sound judgment from years of experience, we use policy to guide our actions. Consolidation is not going to change any of that, nor will it enhance any of that. How will consolidation help me do my job better? I've not heard that from anyone. And I would like to go on record as saying that I have never been told that I could not speak to anyone who came around to DSS.
Thank you.
Next speaker we have is Kim King.
Good evening. I'm Kim King, supervisor for the Foster Care and Adoption Unit here at DSS, I've been here for twenty-four years, nine months, twelve days. I was born and raised here, great place to live, raise a family and to work, and there's no other agency I wanna work with other than DSS under Carlton Paylor, because we are a team with one goal in mind, safety. The past few years have been the most challenging, we worked through COVID when many places were closed, and COVID reduced the number of placements in the state, so this has led to kids staying in our office where we provide them twenty-four-seven care while doing our full-time jobs, including spending the night. We're the first in line to help these kids, we're the last to leave the office. We are cursed at, hung up on, threatened, chased, assaulted, and still our goal is to make sure our children are safe to go home before we can go home. Due to confidentiality, what you have seen over the past few months is one side of each story that has been shared. And it's always easy to blame others or complain if things don't go your way because not everyone's gonna be happy with the outcomes. But what we do every day takes a lot of paperwork, a lot of fact-checking, a lot of overtime and a lot of heart. But to watch videos and pictures put out on social media, taken out of context, having my name and my reputation put on display without my ability to stand up for myself, due to that confidentiality is indescribable. It's not an eight-to-five job, we work twenty-four-seven. I have missed so many family events because of work hours. I get calls on vacation, calls while I'm out sick, and when we're not at work, we're still working. Social workers are the first responders to children in need, and once we knock on that family's door, everything changes. And we make those decisions for families every day based on information provided, just as you commissioners do by making decisions with information here provided. We continue to assess families for more information and facts to make final decisions, just as you commissioners are elected to. I'm asking you, is consolidation your way to try to achieve power and control over a well-established agency that already has state reviews and audits to oversee policy and procedures? Do you see changing the oversight of the agency as a way to support public opinion each time a case doesn't go their way? Do you think overseeing the agency will give you the ability to be privy to confidential records in the future? I ask you, what does consolidation really mean to you all? I am and you should all be proud to share that DSS is a well-organized agency with the state supporting us following policies, mandates and outcomes in child welfare. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Eric Turley.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Eric Turley, I'm a foster parent in Person County and have been for about four years now. Each month, we receive updates on the cases of the children in our care, expressing concerns to the caseworkers, guardian litims during their visits with us. Despite the challenges faced by staff handling up to about a hundred kids that are currently in foster care, we've learned that there's no one-size-fits-all solution for termination rights or reunification with biological parents. Person County locals has highlighted the disparity between caregiver's perspectives and judicial rulings, emphasizing the complexity of legal system as it sits. In a specific incident, our advocacy for a child exposed a Medicaid fraud by a therapy company. Caseworkers reported the frauds, Medicaid, we faced a counterclaim of abuse. DSS, even with us being licensed foster parents, brought three caseworkers to our house to see the child and investigate the claim, showcasing their professionalism and commitment to protecting the children in their care. Caseworkers were charged with juggling multiple needs from a caseload of twenty children each or more, often traveling long distances, working long hours to meet the needs of those they serve. We have seen both sides of the coin during our time, they work within the constraints that they are given, and then provided the support to us when we needed to deal with situations that we are incapable of dealing with. In conclusion, our monthly interaction... In conclusion, our monthly interactions, court updates, collaborative efforts with all parties reflect the system's dedication to the well-being of the children and we all advocate for. We appreciate the relationships with the guardians, caseworkers, biological parents, and everyone involved in the process. I invite everybody that's here to come to the next foster class where experiences are shared and shed light on the interactions between foster care and the legal system, and you can be a part of the solution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Stephanie Bowen.
Hey, good evening, guys. I am not an employee. I am a licensed foster parent here in Person County. My husband and I have been doing this for ten-plus years. I think right now we might be one of the longest-running foster families that have continued. I have worked with five or six different caseworkers. We've had thirteen kids in and out of our house in the last twelve years. We've done kinship, then we got licensed. We've had babies that come to our house and were there for eighteen-plus months, and then a family member pops up and they go to that family. That's the law. You have to abide in the law. There's only so much you can do in those situations. I've sat in court. I've cried. I've had kids taken out of my arms. I've drove to Fayetteville to drop kids off to families that I would have loved to adopt, but it was, this is where they're going, and this is what you have to do. And it's not easy. It sucks. I mean, to be honest, it does. And my heart bleeds for all the people that have been hurt because I know I've been hurt too. But in the time, in all of this time, it's always consistent with the way the workers have done their policies and their procedures. We've had visits every month. We've had GAL visits every month. We have a permanency plan and review every ninety days. We're a part of those things. We hear what's going on. We know what's going on. It has been that way for ten-plus years. We have always had that. So I have some great testimonies with workers from DSS, and then I have some that were like oil and water and I don't care for. However, every single one has always done the same way. The policies and procedures were always followed, in my experience, in our family's experience. And Ms. Vicky, I want you to get your job. I mean, my daddy's a veteran, you know, so I thank the veterans for their service. And the only other thing I want to say is you have to follow the law and you have to abide in the law, and the laws need to be changed. If you go back and look at some of the foster care laws that have been in effect since the twenties and the thirties, that is not what we're dealing with in twenty twenty-three. So I have talked to lawyers. I've talked to House of Representatives. I've reached out to senators and governors. That's what needs to change. The law needs to change, and when the law changed, then the system and everybody within it can abide within the law. But until the law's changed, you have to do what you have to do. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jennifer Hall Rogers.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Hall Rogers. I'm a member of this community, and I have been employed with DSS for it'll be eighteen years next month. Regarding this perceived need to reorganize the agency, I would ask that you deeply consider your motives and reasoning for this. Sound judgment cannot be rendered through information rooted in half-baked conspiracy theories. Decisions based on disinformation and fallacy are of no merit and do not serve the community well. Those who deal in such devious methods of communication are no friends of truth. This isn't the first time the issue has been presented. With the recent state review of DSS being conducted, some, if not all of you, felt it prudent to await the results before making a decision. This demonstrates forethought, which is logical and measured, a wise decision. The review concluded that the laws and regulations of DSS were upheld with no evidence of wrongdoing. Those are the facts. While of course, DSS is not perfect, no agency is, no agency ever will be. But spreading baseless accusations of impropriety only serves to undermine confidence in our local government organizations and the very people who work hard to serve this county. In conclusion, I'd like to express my dissatisfaction and disappointment in some of those within our community. During the time leading up to your forthcoming decision, myself and other members of DSS have found our reputations and integrity unjustly attacked. Here in our community and through social media, my colleagues and I have had our commitment and dedication questioned through outright lies and half-truths. This character assassination makes our job even more difficult and can even be detrimental to those in need of our services. Those seeking to spread these falsehoods certainly do not have the community's interest at heart, only self-interest, I'd say. Lastly, as an agency that serves the public, we welcome support that benefits the public. However, what we do does not need to oversight and cripple us with anxiety and doubt to the point where we become ineffectual. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker Megan Elliott.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity for allowing us to speak to you guys tonight. Let me introduce myself. I know most of you know me. I'm Megan Elliott, the Accounting Supervisor at DSS. Tonight, I'm strongly recommending that you do not go through with the consolidation of DSS. This is not the solution to your problem. Consolidating us will not remove state and federal laws and guidelines that we have to follow. This will not overturn rulings by judges, and this will not give you access to our confidential files. It is very concerning to me that none of you have talked to the DSS board or any of our current employees. The people that you're listening to are upset that things simply didn't go their way. You fail to recognize that we have a job to do that is regulated by the state and federal government. It is also very concerning to me that you want to take control of an agency that you know and understand so little of. Commissioner Thomas, you sit on our DSS board and attend every local meeting. You have received vital information but failed to report on anything to your fellow commissioners. You guys have a HR department of five when fully staffed, and you're willing to dump a hundred-plus more employees on it. Politics doesn't belong in DSS, just like it doesn't belong in our schools and it doesn't belong in our churches. You, the commissioners, appointed Danny Johnson and Jason Thomas to our board. The state appointed Faye Martin and are working to fill a vacant seat. The DSS board appointed Trico Lee Jeffers. If you have or had any concerns, why didn't any of you reach out to them? We have a director that has been in the trenches working at DSS as a social worker for six years, as a director for thirteen years. He has the knowledge. He has the experience. He understands and believes in what we do. But here we are with a retired educator, a banker, a business owner, and a plumber and a plant manager that can manage an agency that cares and protects individuals prior to birth and even some until death. I think not.
Next speaker Tom Fitzgerald.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate the opportunity to be here to speak against the solution that has been proposed. I've only been doing this about forty years, and I've seen a lot of changes over forty years in the composition of our workers, the change in people that were at the top and everywhere else. We are hamstrung a little bit to respond to some of the things that have been said about DSS due to confidentiality. It is hard to tell everything we would know about the hundreds of cases that go before our agency every year. And we only have like twenty-four days of court to try to figure out these cases when it's time to go to court. We deal with other things. We deal with incompetency cases and childcare, child finances, things of those natures. But we're always looked over by somebody that sits in front of us, a judge. We may make all the wishes we want to, if we want to do this, want to do that, it's got to have something to do with this one child or this six children. And we have to prove that beyond a very high standard of evidence. If we don't do it, the child goes back to the parents. And over the course of time, we review these things again, once every three to six months. And we have to prove again whether or not the child is supposed to be with the parent or is supposed to be away from the parent. And by the way, from the beginning, it is always a choice of the judge to return the child to the home. Reunification is always part of the plan until it gets to where it's not. So therefore, it's not like DSS is trying to keep this particular child because they don't like that particular parent. It doesn't work that way. We have to deal with child support issues to support the children that ask for our assistance, that my parents ask for our assistance. And we have rules and regulations we have to follow from the state of North Carolina. So it's not like that I would choose to have anybody, more than anybody, needs to pay for one. It's a state guideline, is what we do. Anyway, I would say everybody here that's spoken could use more than two minutes. And certainly they can. A couple of them, give me a couple of books to read, and I expect that'll take you a little bit more to read all those books. I didn't prepare a book and didn't prepare a speech, but I'm glad to have this opportunity to speak with you tonight.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes our in-opposition.
Well, I do thank everyone for coming and sharing their opinions. What the Board of Commissioners is considering in those actions is, of course, whether to consolidate DSS and another county agency under the supervision of the Board of County Commissioners. This topic is not new. It's one that was introduced a few years back, and at that point in time resulted in no action by the board. So again, it's not new. We've talked about it quite a bit. Having said that, I believe this current board has done its homework, its due diligence. It has communicated within and without the departments and with the other agencies in the county, especially at DSS. And I think with that being said, have the here with all to make a good, sound, and right decision on the subject tonight. Another thing, I'd like to clearly state that this has nothing to do with the current DSS board. Those are appointed and volunteer people, and certainly do appreciate that. So it has nothing to do with the board itself, and appreciate all the hard work that they've done over the years. I'd like to say too that the proposed, excuse me, two weeks ago today, I came down with flu, and I'm still fighting the after effects of that, so please forgive my voice there. But the proposed consolidation of DSS in one of the county departments is an effort to solve some issues related to the day-to-day operations to improve services to our citizens. And I think the letter from the state has been mentioned by several people. Sure, it was requested by our county manager, and the state did respond. They did not identify any specific wrongdoings. However, they did identify and speak of changes that needed to be made. Now, I was one, I guess, one of the two that someone has referred to as basing my decision on that report. That's not accurate. That was a point of consideration. And I have read and I have considered what the state said. So please let me clarify that point, that it was part of the checks and balances in my mind, and I'm not speaking for other commissioners. But yes, it was considered, and they acknowledged changes needed to be made, but none were identified and none were pointed out. But again, if that's of importance to you, I wanted to say that. One, to me, one important advantage of consolidation would be directly, direct involvement with county officials rather than seeking assistance from the state and some representatives that don't know any of us, nor any of the people that they're dealing with. It just becomes sort of like a third-party involvement there. And by years of experience dealing with the state, I think we can all say that anytime we turn something over to the state, we're in trouble because we're taking that control and that authority away from local officials. There is an advantage of DSS employees being able to go to a person within the county. We have a county manager. We have human resources. It makes common sense to me to be able to go within rather than complaining to someone outside and then waiting long-term for them to give you some feedback that you don't know when you're going to get it nor what it may recommend. Consolidation, I believe, would enhance the day-to-day operation by direct involvement of county staff, which would simplify the operations and by, again, providing direct and more effective day-to-day oversight and a higher level of accountability to the citizens of the county. County supervision would eliminate the need for DSS employees to go to the state when questions arise or concerns arise. And it seems much simpler, yet more effective, for employees to go through county staff with their concerns than someone again outside the county and at the state level. Another point of consideration is DSS employees' salaries and benefits are provided by the county, not by the state. That sounds crazy, and probably, I guess, we might could agree that that is. The county pays the salaries, provides all the benefits for, yet have no say in any way whatsoever as to what goes on within the DSS department and its employees. And I think that is one thing that has contributed to a lot of confusion in the public, where the public views this board as having control, and it doesn't. And so in the eyes of the public, I think it does create quite a bit of concern at times. And consolidation would, I think, solve that issue. So those are comments that I have. I don't know if other board members would like to comment. Okay, we have advice from our attorney here. So do we have a motion that we close the public hearing?
Salute.
Motion on the floor to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? No, I'm opposed. You carry it. We are out of the public hearing now. Any other board members like to comment? Before we move on to the next item.
On the topic we just left?
Yes, sir.
Like most of you I've heard speak, I've been approached at various places across this county by former and current employees that were distraught. And their concerns were, I mean, it was really disturbing to me to know that we've got such an agency that's built for, but there may be some flaws. And so I do agree that with the county, Person County Government Oversight, that we could help eliminate some of these flaws because you got us right here. You don't have to go to Raleigh. You don't have to call Raleigh and wait for an email to come back or nothing. So I do like the idea of consolidation. So I do like the idea of consolidation.
Chairman Paul.
Yes, sir.
I, the DSS job is not an easy job, no doubt about it. I wouldn't want to be in that department. I wouldn't want to have to deal with the things they have to deal with on a day-in, day-out basis. And I certainly am not here today to say that I'm after or I want to see the director replaced. I'm not here to say that. I'm not here to say that his job, or any of them's, anybody's job is in jeopardy. But I think we've heard some compelling stories from those who were in favor of the consolidation. And I think we've heard compelling stories from those who were against it. And it's a tough decision for us as county commissioners. And we have to sit there, and we have to think, what is the best, what are we doing? What are we voting on that's for the best interest of Person County? And I hope that we will be able to, I do think, changes in the law, I think someone mentioned that, changes in the law. Absolutely, you followed the book, you said we did it by the book, and I hate to say it, sometimes the book is not right. But it is what it is. Some of the other issues that have been brought up, and Commissioner Palmer mentioned it, I've had some of the employees with the DSS contact me confidentially and have expressed their concerns. So we have to follow the law, there's no doubt about that, we can't change that. But I do think we need to look at internally, how we handle, how we manage the employees. I think we certainly need to be sure, investigate that we're not showing any favoritism, and that we're not having the family being hired in this position, that position, and that our, the salaries are consistent, and that we're not seeing someone who, for whatever reason, favoritism, whatever you want to call it, that is being slighted anyway with their pay. And I'm not saying that's happening. But I am saying we need to be, we need to look at that. And I think if the county were to take this over and consolidate, certainly in favor of the veterans, the veterans have done so much for us. Gordon, I think you remember, it was maybe a year ago that we had, there was a meeting with the veterans that was at City Hall. And they expressed their concerns. With these veterans, they could go see somebody, you know, they need some privacy. Doesn't, you don't need them to have to go in where everybody can see them and they're discussing their issues. And I know that the armory was mentioned during that conversation, but it's not available. Because we were looking at, I was looking at, and I still want to see the veterans have a place to have their services. And Vicky has done an outstanding job, and I appreciate her coming up and speaking today. And you're doing a lot, you're well-respected by the veterans. So I think consolidating with the veterans, and I think doing the consolidation, we should move forward with that, in my opinion. And it's not going to make everybody happy, there's going to be those, as we know, for and against, but that's just my, but I think my gut, it says that I think that this would be one, this is the best decision for Person County at this time. That's all I got.
Mr. Chairman, if you remember at our November meeting, when this was first brought up to have this public hearing, I hadn't made a comment, that I wanted Pats to be included into the consolidation. I think there was a lot of uncertainty at that time among our veterans about what impact that would affect our Veteran Services Department. Since that time, I think we've all done our homework, that we see some opportunity and some good that can come from including Veteran Services into the consolidation. So I'm in agreement with what each of you have said, and would support Veteran Services being included in the consolidation.
This is a very tough decision for me. I'm on the DSS Board for the past year, and I've become close with the people on the DSS Board. I respect everyone on that Board. There's no one on that Board that does not truly care about DSS or the people that's involved with DSS. But we have an opportunity here to help two different groups out. And I'm in favor of consolidation.
Any other comments? Ready to move on to consideration to grant or deny the request, just item number two on that agenda? Whether to consider the adoption of a resolution to change the organization and governance of Person County's Human Services Agencies? So would you like to give me any discussion here related to that? How we would like to proceed with that organization itself? Consolidating DSS with, what I'm hearing, the expression here is the DSS along with the Veterans Affairs?
Yes, so that is the organization of the department. You would be creating a consolidated Human Services Agency to include both Social Services and Veteran Services. The next decision point would be the governance of the Consolidated Human Services Agency. So the options there would be the Board of Commissioners, assuming the duties and responsibilities of the governing board for that agency, or appointing a separate Consolidated Human Services Board, which would function as the governing board for the agency. And that is the one that is stipulated in general statutes as far as the composition of that board. It would require four persons who are consumers of human services, eight persons who are professionals, psychologists, pharmacists, engineer, dentist, optometrist, veterinarian, social worker, registered nurse, two physicians licensed to practice medicine in North Carolina, one of whom must be a psychiatrist, one member of the Board of Commissioners, and any other persons, not to exceed 25 members. So that is the next decision point as far as the governing body for the Consolidated Human Services Agency.
Catherine, is that, we're looking at option B and option D. And so the one where we would serve as the Board of Social Services, that would be option B, and there would not be a committee or separate board?
So option B and option D both involve the Board of County Commissioners being the governing body. So option B, as outlined in the agenda abstract, is the Commissioner serving as the Social Services Board. So that's not creating Consolidated Human Services Agency. Option D is creating a Consolidated Human Services Agency with the Board of Commissioners' governance of that agency. Option C is where an appointed board would come into play.
But option B would, the Board of Commissioners would be, but it wouldn't be consolidated?
Right. So option D is outlined in your packet as the option for creating a Consolidated Human Services Agency with Board of Commissioners governance.
But that one does necessitate that 20-odd member?
It does not, no.
Okay. All right. Option D doesn't, right.
Correct.
That's definitely on my sheet.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to include in the resolution to go with option D?
Have a motion on the floor for option D. Any further discussions? Okay, all in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. A motion is carried.
There are some other things we need to discuss and get some direction on as it relates to option D for the resolution. So under this option, the Board of Commissioners would have to, so within the Consolidated Human Services Agency, employees are no longer subject to the State Human Resources Act. If the Commissioners wish for employees to remain subject for the State Human Resources Act, you would need to express your desire for that to be the case. So basically, I mean, I do need direction from the Board about whether or not the Board wants employees to remain subject to the State Human Resources Act or be subject solely to county personnel policies.
My vote is to leave the State Human Resources Agency and let the county take the role of the governing body and, yeah, let the Commissioners take the responsibility.
For employees to be subject to the county policies.
For the county, yeah. Now, that part doesn't require a vote.
We would include that wording in the resolution. So it will be voted on. I just need to know what items to include in the resolution that you would vote on at your next meeting. Right. So the Board is providing direction that employees of the Consolidated Human Services Agency would be no longer subject to the State Human Resources Act and would be subject to county personnel policies. Correct? And then we would also need to know what the effective date of creating this agency would be. There is a transition period to transition into having a new governing body. We would want to make sure that employees are informed of the decision, have the opportunity to ask questions, and understand how this transition will take place. And, you know, once the Board assumes the powers and duties of the governing board, then the next step is the county manager discussing with the governing board who to designate as the Consolidated Human Services Director. That requires the advice and consent of the governing board. And then appointing the Consolidated Human Services Director. So.
Does the state dictate or mandate a timeline for this?
No.
Okay. So what, what are you comfortable with?
So if the resolution were to come before the Board on January 16th, then I would say, you know, no sooner than February 1st, maybe consider March 1st, you know, to just ensure everyone is aware and that there's the opportunity to transition from the DSS Board to the governing body, that it's not an abrupt switch. That's something for y'all to consider.
Give it plenty of time, sufficient time, so that everybody gets aware of it. So I don't, I don't have a preference there. Time flies, February 1 is close. So you might want to go to March. How do you gentlemen feel?
Mr. Chairman, how about 90 days from the, from the next commissioner meeting?
Is that 90 days from today or the next meeting?
The next commissioner meeting.
Okay, is that sufficient?
I think that would be a sufficient amount of time to make the resolution effective, 90 days from the next commissioner meeting.
Okay, anything else that you need to clarify? We're good to go on that one. That motion being said and done, I would like to make a motion to do a couple of things with Veterans Affairs, that one would be to determine proper space within the existing property there where Freedom House is at this point, where we do have available space, but to identify a room or rooms for them to be able to house their office and their, and Vicky's office, and be able to store records and materials that they've got in several locations. I believe one veteran has even said he has materials at his home, so it's not a safe place. But I would like to make a motion that we do relocate Veterans Affairs from the senior center to the same area that Freedom House is housed in right now. And also, could we, should we include the motion to make the counselor's job a full-time position? There's been a mention of some maybe assistant, but I don't know if we, we might, because we're in the midst of a budget year, to, that could become part of the consideration in next year's budget. But to move forward with making the counselor's position a full-time position at a date certain going forward, we could identify that, starting whenever you feel comfortable to do that. Could be February 1, could be March 1, but with available funds from salary overlap or contingency, but wherever you might find that.
So I could bring back a plan to the next meeting for funding a full-time position with a proposed effective date for that.
Along with identifying the space?
Yes, and we are currently working on DSS space needs and can also include Veteran Services in that.
Okay, that would be my motion. Any?
Mr. Chairman, on this, or do you usually make motions? Or do you usually just ask for the motions? Someone else makes them?
He makes them.
Harvey, he makes it?
Sometimes, yeah.
Okay, any other comments?
I like the location of the Freedom House. That's going to be a lot less congested, and I feel like it'll be a lot more comfortable for the individual soldiers to go visit Ms. Vicky. And that way, they can pour their heart out without the next door office overhearing them crying, or sobbing, or telling their war stories. I just think it'd be a lot better separate. Because that structure is primarily not used unless it's an emergency situation with a child, correct me if I'm wrong, or a spouse that's been beaten or something, that's like an emergency shelter only, and they get moved.
No, that's a little different.
No, we're talking about the space that's occupied by the Person Counseling Center, which is Freedom House.
North Main?
No, over in the same building as Social Services and the Health Department, there's the clinic space there, but they're not utilizing all of it. So we are making plans to be able to expand DSS office space into that area, and have also identified some space that could potentially fill the need with Veteran Services as well. So we're in the process of meeting with staff there, county staff and the Counseling Center staff, to determine how we may reconfigure that space.
I had a different location in mind, I'm sorry. For the confusion.
I think the move would be good for reasons you just stated, and we do have a high number of veterans in Person County, approximately 3,000. And also, to add to that, we've got one of the most active veteran groups across the state of North Carolina, well-recognized for their services, two veterans, and the various events they put on and support here in the county. So I think we definitely... So I think we definitely need to support them, and a move to a proper, good location is much needed and in order. And Clerk, would you sort of state how that motion's going to read? We talked a lot.
As a discretion, we can... You could read as far as the motion.
What I heard is that you would like to look for funding to make the Veteran Services Officer a full-time position and relocate Veteran Services to the Human Services Building.
Any questions on the motion? Any further discussions? You're none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, motion carried. Thank you. Okay, at this point in our meeting, we have 10 minutes set aside for public comment. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Mr. Chairman, we have one, Andrea Childers.
My name is Andrea Childers. I've lived in Person County for 31 years. I cannot believe what a farce the December 4th board meeting was. It was clear you had already made up your minds, no matter what your constituents wanted to say to you. You were not going to consider any facts that were presented to you during this public comment, period. If Christ Himself spoke to you for His two minutes and asked you to not destroy His planet, you still would have voted to resign. You have to answer to your maker for that. I would like to remind you what Thomas Jefferson and the other founding fathers said in the Declaration of Independence. Governments are instituted among men, deriving their just power from the consent of the government. That whenever any form of government becomes destructive to these ends, it is the right of the people to alter. I am here today to remind you that we have not forgotten the injustice that your representative body inflicted upon your constituents. I will continue to remind you of this all year long. I refuse to be a silent sacrifice to your fossil fuel gods.
Item number three on the Agenda's Discussion, Adjustment, and Approval of the Consent Agenda as presented. Changes, discussions? You're none, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Any discussions now? You're none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, motion carried. Moving to new business, item number four is Appointments to Boards and Committees. Clerk to the Board, Ms. Soll.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Board members. I would like to present citizen applications for current vacancies for nominations as the Board deems appropriate. In your agenda packet, you should have applications that were submitted for open vacancies and as well as those that terms did expire for December 31st, 2023. The first one I'd like consideration for is the Adult Care Home Committee Advisory Committee. That is a one-year initial term, a three-year reappointment. There are four positions available. Charlene Wilkins requests reappointment as her term expired on December 31st. May I please ask the desire of the Board?
Just one applicant?
It's one applicant, yes, sir.
I'd like to rereport her.
Commissioner Palmer, is that a motion to reappoint?
Yes. Yes, my motion. So we do have a motion to appoint Charlene Wilkins?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carried.
Great, the next one for consideration is the Airport Commission. It is for a three-year term. Mr. Robert Wilkerson requests reappointment as his term expired on December 31st, 2023. May I please ask the desire of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint Mr. Wilkerson.
Now, a motion to reappoint Robert Wilkerson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carried.
Great, moving on to the next one, the Board of Adjustment. It is a three-year term, two positions available, and one position for an alternate. We did receive four applications. The first one, Elizabeth Bratcher requests appointment. James Thomason requests appointment. Andrea Childers requests appointment. And Bernard Lampert requests appointment. And to remind you, there are two positions available and one as an alternate, so that's three positions. May I please ask the desire of the Board?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to appoint James Thomason in one position, and Bernard Lampert in the other position, the two positions of each.
Okay.
Any discussion? I'm sorry.
Are we going to do an alternate?
You want to include the alternate?
If you... At the desire of the Board.
It'll be fine with me. You want to include an alternate in your motion? Okay, so we have a motion to appoint Thomason and Lampert. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carried.
Thank you. The next one is Environmental Issues Advisory Committee. It's a three-year term, one position for a citizen residing in each of the following townships, Holloway, Flat River, and the Olive Hill. We have one application, Bailey Hunt. She requests appointment for Flat River. May I please ask the desire of the Board?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that Bailey Hunt be appointed to for the Flat River Township.
Now, a motion, discussion? You're none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, motion carried.
Thank you. The next one is JCPC, which is Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. It is a one-year initial term, a two-year reappointment. There are currently two positions available for a citizen under the age of 21. One may be a member of the public representing the interest of families of at-risk juveniles. Two-year term for one position for each of the following: juvenile defense attorney and up to three citizen-at-large positions. We have seven applications for reappointment. The first one, Ashley Stone requests reappointment as a social services designee. The second, Alyssa Black requests reappointment as district attorney or designee. John Stoltz, the third, requests reappointment as chief district court judge or designated judge. Erin Lappin requests reappointment as local sheriff or designee. Louise Oliver requests reappointment for citizen-at-large. Dr. Ron Anthony requests reappointment for local school superintendent or designee. And John Hill requests reappointment for local parks and recreation representative. May I please ask the desire of the Board?
So, all of these are for reappointment?
All of the ones I listed are for reappointment.
Which could be lumped in one motion?
It could be. It could be lumped in one motion.
So, a motion from any Board member, please.
Chairman Powell, I'd like to recommend we accept a reappointment for Ashley Stone and Erin Lappin.
Just those two? Just those two. They're all for reappointment and... Yeah, they're all free. So, Madam Clerk has said it, you could make a motion to include all in one motion.
Oh, let's do that, yeah. I missed that part, thank you. Yeah, they're all good, yeah.
Okay, so we have that motion on the floor. Any discussion? You're none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carried.
Okay, still with juvenile crime prevention, we have one application from Brian Hart, who requests appointment as county manager or designee. This appointment is to fill the unexpired term to December 31st, 2024, for the county manager or designee position.
Motion to appoint Brian Hart.
Motion on the floor. Any discussion? You're none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carried. Thank you.
The next one is PATS Transportation Advisory Board. It is a three-year term, one position available for an occupational affiliation representative for a medical-related service, one expired term to June 30th, 2024, for a representative of economic development or the Chamber of Commerce, excuse me, Chamber of Commerce, were expired December 31st, 2023. May I please ask the desire of the Board? The next one is the Planning Board. It is a three-year term. Both of the applicants are requesting reappointment as their term expired on December 31st, 2023. It's Tabitha George and Zakaya James. May I please ask the desire of the Board?
Both.
For both, yes.
Have a motion to appoint both. Any discussion? You're none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carried.
The next one is for Region K, the Agent Advisory Council. It is a three-year term. Robert Allen requests reappointment as his term expired on December 31st, 2023. May I please ask the desire of the Board?
Motion to reappoint Robert Allen.
Motion on the floor to reappoint Mr. Allen, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carried. Thank you.
The last one is for the Workforce Development Board. It's a one-year initial term, a two-year reappointment. There is one position available for a member or an officer of an organized labor. Dr. Barbara Buchanan requests reappointment as her term expired on December 31st, 2023. May I please ask the desire of the Board?
Motion to reappoint Dr. Barbara Buchanan.
Motion on the floor to appoint Dr. Buchanan. Any discussion? You're none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, motion carried.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Good job. Okay, so we can move along. For a Chairman's Report, I would only say that we've entered into the year 2024, and I feel good about what's going to happen in 2024 in Person County. There's a lot going on. We're very active economically, involved with prospects almost every week. We have some new inquiries, and we keep doing that. So I have a good feeling about progress to be made in Person County in the coming year. And beyond that, I have no other report other than to say, shop local. It's good that we support our local merchants, and that's what makes us successful economically, locally. Manager Kathy, can you report?
As you can see from the previous agenda item, we still have many vacancies on our volunteer boards and committees, so I would encourage the public to consider ways that they can serve in these volunteer capacities. The information on the county website will be updated following tonight's meeting with the vacancies that we remain... That remain, and we will be accepting applications for consideration by the Board of Commissioners at an upcoming meeting. So I encourage all those who are here and those who are tuning in, and you please encourage your friends to become involved by volunteering on the various boards and committees. You will also note that we have job vacancies with Person County Government, so please take a look at those on our website and consider this as a great place to come and work.
Commissioner Sims?
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank all the veterans that came out tonight. Thank you for your support. Thank you for serving our country, and we appreciate everything you've done, and we're going to do whatever we can to help you out. Person County's strong, and the Veterans got a very strong council. We're looking forward to working with you. Secondly, I just want to say that I thank the Sheriff's Department for being here tonight, and I want to say I'm thinking that we don't have the issues that we had at our last meeting. This was a very civil meeting, under control, and I appreciate everyone reacting that way, whether you were for or against what we voted for. It was not a very good indication of what we're like here in Person County at our last meeting, and I hope those who saw that will hopefully understand that's not who we are. So, thank you again for coming out, and I look forward to 2024.
Ms. Oliver?
I'm echoing off of Derek here a bit. As a veteran myself, I've been to Ms. Vicki's office, and we attempted to get me two claims filed. It was during COVID and didn't get an answer on the phone, so... Anybody need to follow up with you? And I'm glad we're moving forward to get you a full-time position, because we need you. We need you badly. There's a lot more veterans out here that you guys don't see. Y'all know them, but you don't see them, and I'm one of them. I did my duty. I've got my injuries, service-related, and I think I'm due to be compensated for. I put it off for 40 years now, and as I'm aging out, I think it's time that I... To get compensated for my interests. And again, I would like to thank the Person County Sheriff's Department for their security this evening, and I will echo again off of Derek. It was a very good meeting. We didn't have any backlash, and I'm just going to spell it as it is, insanity like we had at the last meeting. I'm thankful for that, because that tells me that we have some very civil people here. Those people, most of them at the last meeting, were not from Person County. They were not. They were paid to be here. So that's all I got to say.
Commissioner Perry here. Just want to...
That is not true.
Please be quiet and respect this Board.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to thank everyone who came to speak tonight. I want to thank the veterans for all they do as well, and also the Person County Police Department, Sheriff's Department for everything that they have done, especially for this meeting and the last meeting. It is truly appreciated, and, you know, hard as job is making tough decisions, if everyone may not be able to agree with them, but I appreciate everyone coming out.
Commissioner Thomas?
Just echoing off of what everyone else has said. I thank everyone for coming out. Thank the Bets for coming out. You know, we support you guys, and we thank you for all you have done and all you're going to do. And I just want to take a second to thank the DSS Board for all their hard work over the years. I can't speak enough about them, because I'm a part of them, and I came close to them, and I respect them all. But also, we have a lot going on in Person County, so I think we're going to have a good year ahead of us. Looking forward to it.
Okay, I would back up a step and echo some of the sentiments about the veterans that... that, uh, sometimes it's hard to join hands and cross the aisle and work with other agencies. You guys are very willing to do that, and I certainly appreciate that, and it's a noble gesture on your part to, uh, become a part of this consolidation that we undertook, and, um, but again, I just want to say thank you for your willingness, uh, to do that. Uh, if there is nothing else, we will, we need a motion to go into closed session, uh, for General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven, eight, five, and those permitted to attend would be County Manager Kathy, Clerk to the Board, Solomon, um, and, and, well, our assistant, I'll tell you, uh, attorney tonight, and, uh, Finance Director Amy Warrenberg, is Amy here? There you are, yeah, yeah, I hadn't seen you. And General Services Director, uh, Mr. Ray Fesche. Do we have a motion to, uh, go into closed session?
Motion to go into closed session.
Motion to go into closed session, any discussion? You're none, all in favor, say aye.